I'd like to call the Delaware County Commissioners Meeting to order. It's Monday, October 4, 2021. The time is 9:02 a.m. If everybody could please stand for the pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Steve, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Henry.
Here.
Ms. Regan.
Present.
Mr. King.
Here.
Mr. Ratt.
Here.
First off, we have a public hearing regulating traffic on certain public streets in Delaware County. Do we have anybody here to speak against?
Our four.
Four. You go to the podium, please, ma'am. State your name and your address, please.
Linda Michael, 8,000 South County Road 560 East, Selma, Indiana. I am here today asking for help with controlling speeding on 560 East. We personally live on this road. We also have our business on this road. For the last several years, I have tried to get some help with the speeding issue. And finally, this spring, I reached out to the Delaware County Highway Department and to the county commissioners, and they physically came out to look at the situation, and that's why I'm here today. There is a problem with speeding. And they have, the professionals at the county highway department have some proposals to try to help with this situation. I just think that it's time that we try to do something and give something to try to help the situation. Personally, my husband and I have had a lot of property damage, and this year, we finally put gravel, landscape rock, in front of our home so he doesn't have to mow anymore. So, I mean, that's just, that's a personal thing. But more than anything, I have employees at the marina that are hauling boats back and forth, and this is a safety issue. This, may I just say, this is a park area. The speed limit is 30. There are signs with children playing, hidden driveways, bicyclists. So, this is a park, and I just don't know why anybody would oppose the safety of all the people using a park. It just makes no sense to me. Common sense says that we should provide safety. The speed limit is 30, and we know people are traveling 50, 60, and 70 miles an hour out there. So, I'm asking for safety for all these people who are utilizing the park. I really don't know what else to say. I worry about my employees hauling boats. I worry about campers, boaters, bicyclists, children at the playground. I do understand that we are having maybe some pedestrian crosswalks put out there, kind of interchanging different businesses with the campgrounds and so forth. So, are we going to continue to allow 50, 60, and 70 miles an hour? Or are we going to keep the speed limit at 30 and try to enforce it? And I guess really, that's all I have to say. I think this is a common sense issue. Can you imagine being hit on a bicycle, a kid playing, jogging on that road and hit at 70 miles an hour? Just think about that. That's all that I'm asking today. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Bob Taylor, 12441 West County Road 300 South, Parker. First, I want to thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for addressing this issue. I drive the road every single workday between 7:30 and 8:30 in the morning. I also use the road to, every time I go to and leave my boat at the pier on the extreme south end. I think we all recognize the problem. I would offer a solution to the problem. Manpower, I think, is not probably possible, but let's look at solar powered, no wiring necessary, devices that measure the speed and record the license plate and send the invoice for the fine to the guilty party. I believe we need four, two south and two northbound. The two southbound would be right before you get to the campground, and the second one southbound would be at the playground in the vicinity of the beach. The two northbound would be approximately at the sailing club or between the sailing club and the bridge, and the second one southbound would be in the vicinity of Dry Dock Marina. With those four, two north, two south, we should have enough devices, and you can put a digital readout if you like that, if you think that that would assist in obedience. We've got a tragic situation. We have nearly been hit many times pulling out. We have a blind situation coming up over the hill there, which happens to be right in front of the Michaels residence. Please give us some help. I thank you very much for what you've done already. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
I'm Ashley Wright. I'm with the city of Muncie in Prairie Creek, here to represent Prairie Creek Park. For the most part, we agree with everything that Ms. Michael says. We have a lot of speeders. We want to protect our parkgoers. The only concern I have is with maybe the third one, and that would be at the beach entrance. To protect the city's interest, what happens if that stop sign gets taken down or stolen? Because that's not another county road. That is our property at that point. So, what happens? Where's the liability lie if something comes up missing? So, that would be the only question on our end. But other than that, I completely agree something needs done because it is, even for our employees, it's dangerous. We have our mowers riding around on there. So, I completely agree that something needs done, but I just also try to protect the city's interest at what also.
And I appreciate that, and I've been working with Tommy on this. I've been out there several times, sitting and watching, and I've paced cars out there. The thought was at the beach area is because there's kind of a curve there, and also with the park being right there, was try to get the people to slow down in that area, basically because of the kids and everybody in the park.
And I definitely agree with the thought there. I just, liability things, I just didn't know how that would work.
I understand. Well, I think the county would put the signs in, and we'd maintain the signs. And I think if there was an issue, obviously, if the sheriff's department got there and was on a crash, they would notify that that sign was down.
Okay.
Or if you guys notify the county in the event that sign's down, we'll come out immediately and replace the sign or put a temporary one up until we can replace it.
So, the liability would fall on the county then, even though it was on?
Well, it's the county stop sign. I don't know. You know how liability goes, though. You know, when there's a crash in Muncie, the commissioners get sued along with the city, and it's the same way.
That's exactly our.
Yeah, it's the same way with the county. When there's a crash in the county, the city gets sued too. So, I mean, I'm not saying that there wouldn't be liability because anyone can sue for anything. However, I'm just telling you, we'll maintain those, we'll maintain all those stops.
Okay.
Dustin Clark, Superintendent at Prairie Creek. We are very much in support of the concept. We like where a lot of this is going. We are continuing development. We have moved our brand-new office across the street from the South Shore Campground, which is immediately adjacent to the North Shore Campground. We do anticipate a lot of traffic, foot traffic, crossing from one to the other. We currently have a camp store in there now. As long as things progress, we foresee a lodge there, more expansion. So, we intend a lot of foot traffic to cross that street. We are very much for that. The one at the beach would be the one that we would definitely like to at least be consulted with and/or be able to put some input on where at the beach that one goes. That one concerns us a little bit.
Sure.
Overall, the concept, wonderful. We work with the Michaels. They're doing a great job, but we do have some concerns about the southern one, but we want this project to go forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Cheryl Lindas, 7808 South County Road 560 East in Selma. There's no dispute, the traffic speeds are inconsistent on County Road 560 East. The 4.2 mile stretch from Windsor Road to Highway 35 is a destination road for anyone out there visiting. I stand before you today to request the stop sign or speed tabled or voted no until a time when the proper due diligence can be completed to determine the best practices for the entire stretch of road. Two opportunities are presented. Should the speed limit be maintained at 30 miles per hour on the entire road, which virtually no one adheres to, or raised to 40 miles per hour with the exception of the park area, and managing the flow of traffic on the entire road and not just an eight-tenth of a mile stretch, leaving the rest of the road vulnerable? The increased speeds do not start in the middle of the road. They're starting at the entry points. In a largely unpatrolled area, adding stop signs will produce the opportunity for three new traffic infractions. The stop signs at 575 and Windsor Road are often disregarded when oncoming traffic isn't apparent, and I witnessed that just Friday morning at 7:30 a.m. Adding a stop sign to the entrance of the beach parking is even more concerning because once past that stop sign, especially to the south where the road is the most dangerous, past the Michaels, the speeds will continue to be accelerated. As drivers realize there is little cross traffic from the parking lot, that sign becomes irrelevant. I live directly across the road from the beach area, and I spend many hours outside daily, and I can assure you that a child is at greater risk to be hit in the parking lot by someone doing donuts or driving through the park than they are on that road. The berm installed in 2010, 2011 with the park update has aided in keeping children back from the road, and cable updates by the city would reduce that risk even further, and I believe they're working on that now. As I noted in my letter of September 17th, stop signs should not be used for speed control, and I agree with Mr. Taylor's suggestion on his signs. I requested the accident reports because I want to understand were they all due to speeding, were the drivers impaired, were they distracted by a cell phone? Because if they were, the stop signs are not going to stop them. They're going to continue. Resources are tight, yet I'm asking for consideration of hitting it hard on patrols a few times a season and a coordinated effort through any law enforcement agencies available, including county DNR, state, by requesting grant dollars for patrolling as needed. I'm also asking for additional signage around the park. I'm here as an advocate for the area. Prairie Creek is a critical amenity to the community, and the obstructions will likely lead to less people enjoying the lake due to traffic backups in the high season on such a short stretch of the road. I'm with you on wanting a safe environment for visitors, and therefore, requesting that we vote down our table until the research can take place and a safe, obtainable resolution be presented. Thank you.
Thank you.
With the installation of the three stop signs, I've been working with our engineering department, our highway department. They will put digital speed signs at the beginning of that area, so on both sides, like before you get to campground and then back to the south also, so.
Can I speak for just a moment? One more second.
Yeah, go ahead.
Those stop signs are going to be, my biggest concern is they're not going to be adhered to. I mean, they, when people, they don't adhere to 575 and Windsor Road when they know that traffic is not there. And there's so infrequently traffic at those signs. I mean, I agree on controlling the speed 1,000 percent, but I'm just concerned that people then are going to have a false sense of security by them being there, and then people are not adhering to them. Thanks.
Thank you.
Sheriff. Tony Skinner, Delaware County Sheriff. I wasn't going to bring up the speed limit until you brought it up. I was going to bring up another point, but I agree with you 100 percent. I think part of the reason there are so many speeders on that road is because that's an unreasonable speed limit. It's unrealistic, 30 miles an hour. The road on the east side of Prairie Creek and the road on the west side are both 30 miles an hour. Everything else, basically, in Perry Township is either 40, 45, or 55. For example, Burlington Drive, when you go out of Muncie, southbound, right when you get out of Muncie, past 16th Street, before you even cross the bypass, it turns into 40. I would argue that Burlington is more curvy and more hilly than 475, 465, whatever you call it. It changes names four times. Yeah. And it's a 40 mile an hour zone. Three speed limits. Just for the record, I live less than two miles from this road. I travel it frequently, so not only does it affect the people that live on that road and the people that come in, it directly affects me. So, I'm speaking as a professional law enforcement officer and as a person that lives close to that. Three stop signs is burdensome. It's punitive to the people that live on that road, I think. What I wanted to talk about was another option. Pedestrians, bicyclists, and go-karts, not go-karts, golf carts. Those are the three elements that people always talk about what we're concerned about. Cars aren't driving into the playground and running over kids. It's kids, it's adults, people who are on the roadway. What I propose to you, because they've been successful on the south end of Muncie and on the north end of Muncie, is a path from the playground, or from the campground all the way to the playground. It's 1.2 miles. You put in a bike path, just like you've done on other parts of town this year, that's wide enough for two golf carts approaching each other to pass each other safely. It's about 1.2 miles. I think that solves a lot of the problem, and it gets people off of the roadway that shouldn't be on that roadway in the first place. Thank you.
Tommy Humbert from the county highway department. We have several problems out there. I don't think raising the speed limit is going to help anything. Number one, they're not paying attention to the speed limit, so what's that going to do? As far as the danger, we were out there Tuesday. Guys almost hit trying to clean the road for the Ironman. We've got to do something. We can't just sit back and say, "Well, these stop signs aren't going to work." Yeah, you can Google it. You can talk to police officers. I've got mixed feelings from different police officers I've talked to, but we have to do I don't understand the inconvenience. There's stop signs put on my road, some extra ones that, for safety, and it's worked there. So, I don't understand the big concern about the inconvenience when it's lies. I mean, this lady here will tell you that there's been people, this wreck's had broken legs, broken whatever. We have to do something. I think the flashing signs is going to help, but these people are not paying attention. It doesn't matter if you raise that speed limit. I don't understand what that would do. So.
Well, I think we did do a three-day traffic study out there. Correct me if I'm wrong, it was 47.8 mile an hour?
Eighty-fifth percentile.
Yeah, so 85 percent of people was running 47.8, correct?
Sure. And like I said the other day, they had to be going 50, 55 miles an hour. So, I mean, I don't know what the fix here is, but I think this is a start. I mean, if it doesn't work, what if it doesn't work? They're going to pay more attention to a stop sign than they are a speed limit sign. So, I mean, I guess that's all I got to say. I've been out there. We close that road if we work on it. We do not work on that road with flagmen. They will get ran over. So, I mean, I would like to see it put up. If it doesn't work, we can change something around, but I absolutely, even though it's going against what other people are saying, I think it'll work. And it is a park. That's the thing people don't understand. It is a park, and Morrell Park is governed by Henry County and Newcastle. There's stop signs everywhere there. Speed limit's low, so. That's probably it. You have any questions, commissioners? All right, thank you.
There's one more thing I forgot to bring up. Mr. Taylor's, to his point, I'm very certain that speed cameras, maybe you already know the speed cameras in Indiana are illegal, so they're not legal in the state. That has to have legislature approval in Indianapolis, and I'm certain that it doesn't. You can double-check that, but there have been other places around Muncie that have tried to initiate those, and they're illegal statewide.
Sheriff, have you heard if there's a committee that's studying them for the state?
No, I haven't. It never made the radar this year for a bill for this legislative session, so the last time I checked, it was illegal, and I've never heard anything since then.
Thank you.
He's actually correct. So, it is illegal. Three bills were introduced last session just for cameras in construction zones, and even those didn't get anything.
You got to be kidding.
Yeah. I'm not kidding.
No, the city sheriff is right. City of Muncie put one up at Port and Hoyt and had to remove it.
Hi, my name is Kristin Herbst. I live at 8620 South County Road 560 East. We live on the reservoir. Our family is avid cyclists and runners. We have four sons. They're all on the road all the time, as are my husband and I, and we agree there are safety issues with speed on that road. However, we do not agree that the stop signs are the solution. These type of stop signs that are installed solely for the purpose of slowing down traffic are actually, have a term for them. They're called nuisance stop signs, and they're often, they have to be removed later because they cause more issues than they resolve. So, I have a quote here. It says, "One common misuse of stop signs is to arbitrarily interrupt traffic, either by causing it to stop or by causing such an inconvenience that motorists are forced to use other routes. Studies conducted in many parts of the country show that there is a high incidence of intentional violations where stop signs are installed as nuisances or speed breakers. These studies show that speed was only reduced in the immediate vicinity, about 100 to 150 feet, of the nuisance stop signs, but speeds were actually higher between stop signs than they would have been if these signs had not been installed. These same studies show that drivers increase their speed between unwarranted stop signs to make up for lost time. Because of these studies and the increased speeds of drivers on streets with unwarranted stop signs, the Michigan Manual of Uniformed Traffic Control Devices clearly states that stop signs should not be used for speed control." So, and as a cyclist, I know bikers are not going to stop three times on that road. I won't. I slow down, I just stop pedaling, but stop and get off your bike and start again, they're not going to do it. And so, that's going to increase the risk of them getting hit by drivers as well. So, I love where we live. It's beautiful, and I want it to be safe for everybody who comes there, but I do not believe this is the solution. I agree with the flashing lights that show you your speed. Those have been shown to be effective. Not speed bumps, but speed tables around the park area and the high-traffic area, especially as I mentioned, they're going to be doing, increasing traffic across the road, crosswalks there when that does actually happen, but right now, there's no point in that. But adding stop signs, yeah, sure, that's the cheapest solution to do immediately, but it's going to make more problems, and you're going to have people that are diverting off of the main road to go on these side roads. I'm thinking high school students on their way to school are going to be going on these side roads that aren't as well-maintained in the winter, and it's going to cause issues with accidents and things like that. So, I really think that there are other, better solutions. Also, the other thing that really bothers me is the increased gas consumption. All around Indiana and the country, people are putting in roundabouts because stop signs are so bad for the environment and gas and fumes, so I just feel like we're going backwards there with that. So, I'm not saying roundabouts are a solution. I don't think that would work at all, but there are other solutions I think we should look at before we install these stop signs and then decide, "Oh, we better take them down because they're not working and they're causing more problems," and then we're going to have more issues, so.
What year was your study at Michigan?
Uh.
If you happen to know.
I don't have that on here, but I have the website if you would like a copy of, or I could just give this to you because it's on my computer at home.
Ms., did you sign in?
Oh, no. Right here?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Clark, I got a question for either you or Ms. Wright, either one of you.
If you guys know anything, Ashley's been out there six years, so this is probably going to be a team answer.
I've known Ashley for a while, so. My question is, the sheriff brought up about a trail, like what we've been building around the city and the county. Has the city or Prairie Creek looked into placing a trail, like from the campground area to the beach area? Because I know you guys are like putting in bike trails and stuff all over through there, so have you looked at that section of putting some kind of trail for like biking in that area, pedestrian walkway in that?
The only thing that I can speak directly to of is South Shore. We've had several conversations with the city engineer about the possibility of connecting certain areas. That is all. It is an extremely high view of when could we do this? Nothing is in the works that, as far as I know of.
Funding would be a big, there is some ways to get kind of around some of those areas, especially for pedestrians, but it's a, you know, you have to go on those roads with a dock, so.
Mm-hmm.
A lot of the golf cart users from the campground will use those roads because they don't want to be on that road. I've been told that several times by some of the campers, but I would love to see a trail out there, but we would have to try to find the funding for it because 1.2 miles would be a little bit costly.
That would be beyond what could be currently done.
Yeah.
Yeah.
For our foreseeable future. I know the Millings have helped quite a bit, getting away from the dirt roads and the mud paths. We would love to see more of that. I think we would be supportive of a bike path as a high-level view.
Yeah, and one of my things is, yes, Prairie Creek is out in the county, but it's also owned by the city or leased by the city. Sometimes on county roads with us having to repave and do some other things that sometimes we don't even have the right of way in certain areas, so we have to get the right of way from people who purchase it and everything else. I don't even know if on that road, if we would even have a right of way that would go into an area that we could do something.
It would be maybe a future conversation with the water company and stuff. They're usually not against anything we want to develop as long as it doesn't affect their water quality. That's a lot of, they're really great to work with, so I wouldn't necessarily count it out. I wouldn't say it wouldn't be an option.
We would definitely be supportive of that conversation.
I'm just wondering, like even the water company, I know, you know, different places have foundations and money that they can spend if some of those areas would want to come in and help build this trail for, for that.
We could always bring that up to them.
Real quick, please.
Okay, so years ago, and I don't know where this plan is, but Dennis Tyler had a plan to connect the north and the south. So, I don't know if that's through those roadways that are already there, but I mean, this was early in his mayor's.
So, I can't speak to that specifically. I can say recently, Judd Fisher and Phil Tevis were kind enough to work with Mayor Ridenhour. They uncovered the '07 master plan. That master plan for 2007 Prairie Creek has extensive roadwork, development, trail systems, all in it. It was never implemented, but all the research was done. Again, Judd Fisher, Phil Tevis, Mayor Ridenhour, they've recently kind of brought that back to the forefront. That's from a 30,000-foot view, though. Currently, we don't have the funds to move those forward at present.
Well, I know also that like the state has given like the, it was like $50 million for a ready grant. That ready grant probably could have been great to use to put in a trail system there to help you guys. I mean, especially with having Ironman and everything else out there would have probably been a great, if somebody would have thought of it at that time when they put in the ready grant to put that, and maybe they will do another phase of this, that you could possibly go after that. But I would have conversations with the Ball Foundation, Community Foundation, even with American Water, since the city leases that area from them, maybe they can come in and help also in that.
Well, there may be some, maybe some money coming up federally, too, with what's going on now in Washington with the infrastructure bill that's trying to be passed, so maybe there'll be more money available in the future.
Sometimes I worry about that money going to the state.
I worry about it, too, but hopefully, hopefully.
Yep, if you guys would commit, if the county ends up receiving some money and it's on a county road, and that's a, if that's an infrastructure that you guys would like to help support us to move forward, we'd love to have the county's support, and if you guys can split dollars with us, that means our dollars go twice as far, your dollars go twice as far. So, if you're willing to shoulder some of the burden, I would say that that's something that we could definitely look at.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
I can sign in.
Yes, ma'am.
Can I sign in?
Yes.
My name is Janet Bertram, and I live on County Road 560 East. We actually live right across from the parking lot of the beach area. I have two grandkids that I'm raising, and we have two dogs that we walk every night. Yes, speed is a problem out there. However, I don't feel like the stop signs are the answer. We go across that road several times a day, either with the kids going to the playground or walking the dogs or whatever. Most of the time, we have no problem crossing the road. There are more problems with people over in the parking lot doing donuts and driving crazy in the park. crazy in the parking lot than they are on the road. And another thing Cheryl and I were just talking about, stop signs not going to help the people that are on the bridge trying to fish off of the bridge. There's always people, you know, walking that bridge and going over the bridge and down the sides to try to fish. And that's, the stop sign's not going to help that because the stop sign's not until you get to 450 or 400. And I used to live on 400. I lived on 400 for 18 years and I never had a bit of problem. It's a three-way, never had a bit of problem getting out. There was no, you know, speeding traffic that I had to wait on or anything like that. Certain times of the year, the traffic is heavier and they do go faster. I agree that maybe the speed limit until you get to the park area should be 40 because nobody adheres to the 30. But I've never worried about my grandkids playing in the park, never worried that a car is going to come in there and hit them. And I'm just, a question, is there any statistics on, has there been any children hit on that road or has there been any bikers hit on that road? Or anybody in a golf cart hit on that road by people speeding? I mean, are there statistics on that?
No, there's not been anyone that I can find.
Okay, that's...
A lot of maybe near misses, but...
Yeah, well, there's a lot of runners out there. There's a lot of bikers out there. You know, they go that road, they take that road to get on the trail. But I mean, I think more than any, most people are pretty, you know, they watch out for them because they know they're out there. So, and I think, you know, the school bus having to stop three times, that stop signs along that road is going to take her more time and so that's all I got to say. I'll sign in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I will say on my part, I do know someone personally that was hit on 560. It's been probably about 25 years ago, but I know, so it's not, this is not a new problem, but I do know someone that has been hit on it, him and his two kids. So it has happened. We've just been lucky for a long time.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Do we have anybody else? I entertain a motion to close a public hearing.
I'm a second.
A motion of second. Steve, can you call the roll, please?
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes. Next, we'll move to appointments. We have a non-voting appointment to the Delaware County Redevelopment Commission. A Mr. John Adams has met with, I believe, each one of the commissioners and is interested in taking that spot. It has to be somebody from either a school board, school superintendent, and Mr. Adams is on Delcom's school board?
Correct. I make a motion and we approve the appointment.
So move. Second.
Have a motion of second. Steve, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes. Next, we have the Airport Authority Board. I know there's two people that has reached out, but Jenny, I don't know if I have received the resignation from the lady that is wanting to resign. And I think I'd rather have that resignation before I appoint anyone else to that board.
And it must be a Republican. We're off balance, so that's one of our boards that has to be balanced.
Make a motion to table?
Second.
Have a motion of second to table. Steve, can you call the roll, please?
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Next, we need approval of minutes for September 20, 2021, Commissioners Meeting.
So move.
Second.
Have a motion of second. Steve, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes. Next, we have presentations. I know there wasn't anything under this, but Mr. Mitch Isaac contacted me and would like to speak on behalf of Country Village on, I believe, the great job that our County Highway Department had done in your area. So, Mr. Isaac, floor yours.
Good morning. Mitch Isaac, 8501 North Yellowstone Drive, President of Country Village Creequid Neighborhood Association. I guess this is fitting since we've been talking so much about roads this morning. I'm coming on behalf of our Neighborhood Association Board to first thank the Commissioners for the good work that's being done out in our neighborhood. As you all know, but maybe some of the public doesn't know, roads in Country Village have been neglected for three or four decades. And with help and support from the Commissioners, last year, they installed a five-year plan to take our roads, which are concrete and buckling, and take them down to the gravel area, grind them down, pave them, and give us roads that meet the quality of our neighborhood. And so that started, that project started last year and continued this year. And we wanted to say thank you not only for continuing it, but going above and beyond. Commissioner Henry came out and spoke with a concerned resident. Tommy and his staff at the Highway Department not only paved roads, but patched roads. We had a road where someone broke an axle, actually. Well, maybe it wasn't an axle. I'm sorry, maybe some kind of car part. I'm not a car guy. He broke something and it was expensive, all right? And Tommy came out and he patched it and he filled it so it wouldn't happen to somebody else again. And so we are just so pleased with the attention and work that's being done in Country Village. Tommy's doing a great job. And so what we wanted to do is, first, we have just a small token of gratitude and appreciation for you, the Commissioners, and then Tommy and I are working on us coming out and getting some donuts and coffee for him and his crew. So on behalf of Country Village, what we have for you all is from, if I can come up...
Sure.
From local Baker Sea Salt and Cinnamon, a number of Country Village Creequid Neighborhood Association branded cookies.
And they're all sugar, no, vegan.
They're vegan. So that is you and your staff, just as a thank you for your attention to our roads. And then we're going to go out and do donuts and coffee for Tommy. Tommy's just done a great job, so.
Thank you, Mitch. Appreciate it.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mitch.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your time and appreciate your good work and enjoy the cookies.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks again, Mitch. Appreciate it.
Next, we move to contracts and agreements for approval, the 2022 holiday schedule.
Yeah, I'll read through the days on it. New Year's Day is on a Friday. Martin Luther King Day is on Monday. President's Day is on Monday. Good Friday is Friday. Primary election's on a Tuesday. Memorial Day is on a Monday. Juneteenth is on a Monday. And we have Independence Day, it's on Tuesday this, next year. Labor Day is on Monday. General elections, Tuesday, of course. Veteran Day is on Friday. Thanksgiving, Thursday and Friday. Christmas Eve, Friday. Christmas Day, Monday. New Year's Eve, Saturday.
Do you have any questions over the holiday schedule?
Since we are adding a, I know I'm not going to be very popular, but since we are adding the Juneteenth, Christmas Eve on Friday, do we make that noon because there's always so much business for holidays? I'd like to say noon.
I'd like to just keep it all day. I mean, I don't, if you have a bigger family, sometimes you have things on that Friday to do.
Well, I know that.
I understand what you're saying also, but I know with big families, they're usually busy for Christmas Eve and Christmas Day both.
Okay, that's fine.
I'd like to approve the holiday schedule.
As presented?
As, yes, as I stated.
Wait a minute. New Year's Eve, Saturday.
Oh, that would be...
If it's on a Saturday, it will be a Friday that...
Yeah.
So that's...
We would be closed.
Should we say, Christmas is on, and even haven't, on Sunday?
Do you have anything else? Ms. Reagan?
No.
I'll second it then.
Steve, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
No.
Mr. King.
Yes. We'll move to LPA Consulting Contract, RQAW. Ms. Moir?
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm presenting you the standard NDOT boilerplate contract for Bridge 112. That is a replacement project. It's located on 600 South at Williams Creek. We have followed the NDOT RFP process. We've done the scoring. NDOT has found, has reviewed our contract and approves it, or finds it acceptable, I should say, you guys approve it. But the agreement's for not to exceed $224,880 and we'll get 80% reimbursement.
I make a motion. We approve the contract.
Second.
Have a motion of second. Steve, can you call the roll, please?
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes. The Construction Inspection Service.
Yes, that's for Bridge 125 located on Nebo Road over York Prairie Creek. This is a project that will go to construction next year if we get the right of way cleared in time. This is a standard NDOT boilerplate template contract. It's been reviewed by NDOT. We followed the RFP process and the agreement's for not to exceed $214,700 and that is also an 80% reimbursement.
Is there a chance that this could get delayed or, I understand there's some concern about the roundabout that's going to be out there next year being built at the same time?
I mentioned that to Pete Olson after you said, because I've not heard any complaints. And he said he's hearing people rather have it all done at once, just rip the band-aid because they don't want people cutting through the neighborhood for a two-year period. So, but his project's about 10-week closure, so it won't be as closed as long as the bridge project.
And the roundabout, because when they did the Jackson, they kept some of it open, right? The roundabout? Or was that closed for?
No, that was closed.
For six months?
No, that was probably a three-month...
Yeah, it went fast.
But you've got to keep in mind, too, our federal funds, our program for this fiscal year.
Well, that's why...
So I don't want to lose this funding.
That's what I've seen from people, but they're worried about the one entrance down there by the bridge. And I've heard the neighborhoods had some meetings, but they've not been calling you.
No, not, and we've had, we've had multiple conversations with Yorktown trying to schedule ours fluidly as we can, along with representatives from NDOT.
The schools, yeah.
In the school system.
Okay, if the schools, that we want to...
And he's trying to get his done while the school is closed for the summer.
Okay.
If things work out that way.
Okay, that explains it. Thank you.
I make a motion to approve that contract as well.
Second.
Have a motion of second. Steve, can you call the roll, please?
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Thank you.
Next, we'll move to Humana Group Medicare Advantage Plan Renewal.
Pam? Yes, Pam McCammon, Human Resource Director. This is just what we do every year when we carve out the over 65. We offer them a Humana Plan that they have to go through themselves. It's no cost to the county, but it is a lower cost for them, for the retiree.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion of second for approval. Steve, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Thank you.
Next, we have ordinances for first reading. Ordinance number 2021-028, an ordinance to amend an ordinance regulating traffic on certain public streets in Delaware County.
Commissioners, this is for Nebo Road at County Road 350 North. I've sent all this paperwork to Judd Fisher for advertising for a public hearing, so I'll assume that will be scheduled on the next agenda. We've received a complaint about high-speed traffic, accidents, side obstruction issues. I'm very familiar with this area, grew up in this area, and it is a problem. So I am, and both intersecting roads have high volumes of traffic, so I think this would qualify for a good always-stop intersection.
I'll make a motion to introduce ordinance 2021-028.
Second.
Have a motion of second for introduction. Steve, can you call the roll, please?
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Joe, you'll get a, get a notice for a public hearing?
Yep.
Thank you.
Next, we have ordinances for second reading. Ordinance number 2021-027, an ordinance to amend an ordinance regulating traffic on certain public streets. I believe this is the one that we just had our public hearing on.
I would make a motion, we approve this ordinance in hopes that we can get some type of path or something put in out there at that point, reevaluate and possibly pull these.
You don't want to table it?
No.
I'd like to ask, if I may, the public that's out here, if we went just to one-stop sign or four-way, or three-way on 400 South, how many would be in favor of 400 South? If you just had one, yeah, if you just had one vote, how many would be in favor of 450 And who would be in favor of the 560 East with the beach?
The three on 450 South.
Yeah.
The 450 South. So that's where I'm going. I think three are excessive. I spoke to a person that's lived out there for 40-some years and they and I agreed that if we had to go with one, that 450 South was where they'd recommend it. So I'll second it, but...
Do you have anything, Shannon?
Is she seconding my motion to approve the ordinance?
I think she's, she...
Or is she?
I think she's wanting to amend it where instead of three, it goes to...
Vote it down.
The one for 450.
Okay.
If, if it gets amended where we have one-stop sign on County Road 450 South, correct, then you would second it.
I'll second it, but I'm just going to vote it, as presented, I'm going to vote against it. So however Mr. President wants to do it, Joe, what do you recommend?
You can, I mean, if you're seconding the vote, you're effectively making a new motion to approve the amended, ordinance as amended. But if you're, I mean, I guess it's up to you to be clear as to what your intent is.
I'd like to change it.
Okay, then you can make a motion to...
You're making a motion to put a stop sign at 450 South and that's it?
That's it.
Basically, strike item one and three off of the ordinance.
Shannon would have to withdraw his motion. Yeah, Shannon would have to withdraw his motion.
Or amend it.
Yep, because he can amend his motion to go with the one-stop sign.
Good.
And she could, and it could go that way.
Be more about...
Or we can vote on the one and see where it goes.
Or you could just consider it, that his motion died for lack of a second.
Um, we have to do something. I don't want to not do something out there.
I agree.
We got problems out there and, quite frankly, the argument that it's going to be inconvenient is not an argument to me, so.
Well...
If you're not going to approve my motion, I will amend my motion to include 450 South and do away with the 400 South and 460 or the beach area, the beach area, with the electronic signs. And we'll see if that doesn't help, but if it doesn't help, I'm going to come back again with an ordinance to place signs up 400 and the beach.
Second that.
And we have a motion of second to amend ordinance 2021-027. Steve, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes.
We have no resolutions for approval. Next, we'll move to department heads and elected officials. Pam?[1748.54]
Yes, Pam McCammon, Delaware County Human Resources. Uh, we are going to have a flu clinic set up here on October 20th. It's going to be for the county building from 8:30 to 10:30 in the new Commissioners' Conference Room. I'll have signs up, and that's gonna be from 8:30 to 10:30. We're hoping we can get everyone from the county building in in two hours. And then we're gonna go to the Justice Center that afternoon from 12 to 2:30, and we're gonna be set up in the Commissioners' courtroom out there also. And then a week later, on the 27th, we're going to go to the highway from 1 to 3:30, and Tommy thinks we'll just be set up in the back. I don't know for sure, but I'll let Carrie know by then. But this is for full-time employees on our county health insurance.
Good.
Thanks.
Thank you, Pam.
Anyone else?
Uh, I have a couple of questions. Sheriff, could you come up here? How many inmates do you guys house for out of county right now? Between 20 and 25?
The last couple of days, we've been in the mid-20s, yes.
Okay.
It's, it, a couple of months ago, we were down to about 14, so it ebbs and flows from 15 to 25 or 26.
Okay, and it's $40 per day?
$40 per day is what we charge them.
Can you get with me and let me know how much it actually costs the county to house them?
The only, the only, um, tangible cost that, that we can identify is meals. We, we don't have a formula to, to work in manpower, electricity, you know, um, laundry, anything like that. So meals are a dollar forty a, uh, per meal, so, you know, little bit less than 450 a day, taken from that 40. Other than that, we don't have a formula that, to, to, to break down and, and add in the rest of those resources.
Okay, that's why I sort of wanted to know, like, the meals, what it actually costs the county to feed them as they come in, cause I know a lot of times we've actually got the clothing and stuff like that when they come in.
So it's about, it's about a dollar forty a meal, that's what the first six months of this year was.
Okay, uh, how many employee spots have, you have empty from like January, just say January 1 until now?
The last I knew, we had, I think, 26 or 27 corrections officers that had left this calendar year.
Have, have you hired anymore?
Yeah, yeah, we've, we've hired, uh, we're, we're almost up. We're almost up to where every available spot is hired, but we still have people that have quit, like within the past, say the past month, who might have had six or eight weeks of vacation, so they're still burning their time, so those spots are still open. But we're, we're almost full to where every single spot we can hire, we have. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Yeah.
What about your deputy spots?
We're five short in deputies, and I plan on, after the budget hearing is over, uh, this month, we're gonna have a hiring process.
How long have you been five short?
About two months. We've been short, uh, since the springtime, one, and then two, and then three, and it's a, it's a slow procedure, but, but we need to have another hiring process.
And the five is that also because you're waiting for the other ones to burn their time?
No, only, only, only one of those is, is because of that. The others are open and could be hired anytime, but the, the hiring list, the, the most recent hiring list that we've done is exhausted. We need to have another hiring list.
Okay.
Actually, I think the number now is six because Lieutenant Walker just retired, but his time runs all the way through the end of January.
Okay. Mr. Craycraft, could you get me the information of how much money that we have brought in from out of county, cause I believe that goes to the general fund, doesn't it? How much money that the county has received since taking in out of county inmates? Uh, I'd like to see that. Also, cost savings that the county has incurred with not filling certain spots for the correction officers and, uh, sheriff's deputies. I'd like for that to include the insurance, the cost savings from the insurance, uh, also their pay, perf, and FICA. Uh, if you could get that to me, I, I would really like to take a look, look at that. I know they're asking for pay raises and, and things like that, and I've looked at some plans and stuff, and to, to do a plan, to do this, you actually need to look not one, two, three, you know, you need to look down to make sure that these guys can actually sustain, and the county can sustain the raise. And I'd also like to know what, with the raises, what that would raise perf and FICA, and also how much money would have to be placed back in to the sheriff's pension to do this. You know, it's, need to, hate to say it, but need to take a leadership role, need to start looking into this to see what money is being generated into the county, to possibly do something here.
But, but to make it clear, this is, this is the council's job to take care of.
Right, but I would rather, I want my own numbers because.
I, I understand, I understand, but, but, but we're getting hammered on Facebook because we're not giving raises, and the Commissioners don't give raises, so.
But if I have this information, and people come and talk to me and ask me this, then I can sit down and say, okay, the county generates this much money, this is how much money it costs per inmate, this is how much money goes into the general fund, this is how much more it's going to cost in perf and FICA, so this is what, the percentage that could be left over, that could actually go into a raise for your correction officers and your sheriff's deputies. I mean, I listen to the radio, and I mean, uh, Geotech is, or Geo is paying $18 an hour, so you'll be losing people. But not only the sheriff's deputies, but we also have to start looking into other people that's here, uh, you know, to try to get them at certain spots. But a lot of people look at people that work 32 and a half hours compared to somebody that works 40 hours. There is a big pay, if you break it down by hourly wage, and I used to get in trouble on this all the time when I was on the council, cause I don't break it down by the salary, I break it down by the hourly, because you have some people that work 32 and a half hours that are actually making 19, $20 an hour because of the, the hourly rate, then you have some that does 40 hours that's only making 15, $16 an hour. So there is sort of a difference where you need to adjust pay scales and stuff, and I see this, but, you know, I'm, I, I, I get dinged pretty hard, and Shannon's the same. I'm, I'm not the guy that gives pay raises, I'm not the guy that does that, and, you know, but everybody's like looking at us to come up with this plan to do it. So, I mean, I would like to have those numbers, so I can look at it. That way, when people come and ask me these questions, I can answer them, and, you know, we had the discussion earlier about the CARES Act money that come in and how it's not used to get us from one, from like January to May, and it's like in the operating balance to keep going, so we don't have to borrow money. And I was on the council for four years, two of it as, as a president, so I understand that, but if you could get me these numbers and everything, I would love it. That way, I can answer people's questions, because honestly, I, I'm tired of looking on, uh, social media and people saying I'm pocketing money, well, not just me, but the rest of the Commissioners, and it's coming from family members and stuff of these people, and I just, I want them to understand that we don't give the raises. We don't do that. We don't have control of the general fund. We can't just pull money out of the general fund as Commissioners and say, here you go. But I am aware I can look at numbers and, and stuff and say, yeah, there's a percentage right here that next year you can raise it to here. Well then, year two, there's more of this coming in, which is a percentage where you can raise it here. So it might not be like a one year, but you have to start looking two, three years, four years, how you can start putting this into the system. So I wanna thank you for telling me how much that is, and if you guys could give me those numbers, that would be great, and, uh.
Can I address something, though, about your, about your daily rate?
Yep.
That's already been counted as anticipated revenue for the county. What Donna does, she gets with Nancy at the, at the, when they start doing budgets, and they, they say, okay, we're gonna average 25 inmates a month out of county, and that, so that money's counted already one time when it comes setting our tax rate and things like that as anticipated revenue. It's actually not just, he's making revenue.
Right.
For the county, that's, that's already counted, and so during the budget process, that's taken into account that, you know, he might have 40 inmates, 40 out-of-county inmates a, a day or whatever, and so those numbers are given to us by the Sheriff's Department because we add that into anticipated revenue already.
Right, I, me personally, I don't understand how we can do it as anticip, anticipated revenue when it could be 20, but it could be 10, then it could go from 20 to 30 to 40, so it's hard to say that that's anticipated revenue coming in. I would look at it more as like unappropriated funding that's coming in, because when you look at unappropriated funding, you look at funds that you can't sit there and say $100,000 is gonna come in, when it could only be $50,000 that's coming in. So I can't anticipate that I'm having $100,000 and only 50's coming in.
Yeah.
So me, I would look at it, you know, eh, about like an edit fund or something like that, cause I can't anticipate that, say, I'm gonna get $4.5 million, and then only $4 million comes in, because when I do that, then it.
I understand that, but the budget process, you have to anticipate low-it revenue, edit-revenue, things that, that you look at what's been done over the last two or three years, and you have to anticipate that, because if not, you're not gonna have anything to put into your budget process where, you know, say, um, county highway, now we know that if they raise gas tax, you know, one penny or whatever it is, a certain amount of money's gonna be raised for motor vehicle highway fund.
Mm-hmm.
And so that's anticipated revenue, and so I think some people, I got an email from one of the council members, they think the money the sheriff is raising by having out-of-county inmate is just free money coming in and for you to, you know, to get, and it's actually, or, as a matter of fact, I think Donna said that she had talked with Nancy, and they actually probably have over-anticipated what revenue, so I don't know if they, if she thought she was gonna have more out-of-county inmates than actually we have at this time, or, or what it is. I'll get all the numbers for you, but, but, uh, people don't understand that that's already processed in our budgeting process, and so it's actually not just extra revenue coming in. Now, you can go over your anticipated revenue, but very few ever do. You know, if you look over the last three or four years of low-it, or whatever it is, it's usually pretty close to, to what it is, and, and the state claims that some of those revenues are gonna be down for the next two or three years, because low-it tax is a payroll tax. Last year, everybody was laid off, obviously you're not getting that out of unemployment checks, so you, all this COVID's not gonna shake out for the next two or three years, and so we don't know how it's gonna affect revenue.
And I understand that too, but the out-of-county inmates coming in, that's not really county tax revenue.
I understand.
That's, that's coming in, it's, it's from a different source than the taxes.
I'll get a report.
But if you could get me those numbers and everything, I'd appreciate it. Thanks, Sheriff.
You probably won't see much on the pay lines with the corrections officers, you know that, Steve, cause everything they, they pulled out every penny they could to put into overtime budget for this year, but on the merit side, there should definitely be money sitting on the pay lines.
Thank you. Anybody else have anything? Everybody got their, uh, monthly report from Waits and Measures?
Yep.
Move to payment of claims in the amount of $1,87,922.19.
So move.
Second.
Have a motion and second for payment of claims. Steve, can you call the roll please?
Ms. Rigan.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Mr. Kane.
Yes. Jenny, do we have anybody sign up?
I think the majority.
Was for the public hearing?
Yeah.
I'd like to give a shout-out to the, the mayor and the, uh, Sheriff Department and the EMA and EMS that helped put the, uh, Iron Man on, and, um, appreciate all your overtime that you had to spend out there in the rain, and hope it wasn't too muddy for you towards the end, but, um, I was out there Saturday morning, and, um, everybody really appreciates what all we do for them out there, and Mr. Clark, all your hard work getting the park looking so nice, and Tommy doing the side ditches and cleaning off the street, roads.
Uh, Mr. President, I do have something. Um, we lost a very valuable member of, um, our team, uh, yesterday, um, due to some complications he had, Brent Langdon, he worked out at the, uh, um, fairgrounds, done an amazing job for us out there, um, came ill here just a couple of weeks ago and passed yesterday, but, um, at this time, I would request we have a moment of silence, remembrance of Brent.
Everybody bow their head.
Thank you.
Does anybody else have anything? If not, I'll entertain a motion to recess.
I'll make a motion, we recess.
Second.
Have a motion and second. Steve, can you call the roll?
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Ms. Rigan.
Yes.
Mr. Kane.
Yes, recess.